Straight up center block, PM, and we will begin with a roll call. Police clerk.
Councilor Long here. Councilor Combs.
Here.
Councilor Blith.
Here.
We have a call.
Item number three on our agenda tonight is the public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time, and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed fifteen minutes. Preference will be given to local citizens and in compliance, the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussions permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any public comments at this time? Yes, sir, ma'am, both of you, just come up to the podium. We have had technical difficulties without a remote mic tonight, so you may need to speak a little more loudly than normal, but just tell us your name and...
Yes, my name is Mike Burke. It's my wife Kathleen. We live southeast of town, Greystone Estates. December the 6th, thirty caliber rounds came through our back, the back of our house. Went through two broken windows, traveled through two interior walls. Called the police. They came quickly. Detective came out the next day. I contacted game wardens. All the answers I could have were the same thing, illegal hunting, poaching, that sort of thing. December 6th, clearly after rifle season has been over. Just wanted to notify you, possibly come up with a remedy before someone's injured or worse. Thanks for the opportunity.
You're very welcome.
At all, but it just moved out of the way. It got me right in the head. It just moved from where it went from. It went all the way through our house.
Uh, just there, you did go to our house. You were addressed on a T E O sisterhood meeting last year.
You were over there on the southwest side?
Yeah, I don't know if you recall. I do small that houses, but a group of fifteen or twenty ladies.
So you don't even back up to the woods that are on the east side?
Yeah, that's county property.
That's straight.
You can imagine the confusion with those folks in the house if that had happened then.
I immediately conceived of being on the other side of the addition, but just on that side, that's it. Or...
It's county property between Amber's Way and Cambridge Circle.
Sure, but there are a few houses back there the other way. It's totally...
There's quite a few.
And yet...
People bo-hunt back there, but I think they should be discharging their firearms.
We did know if there's reckless endangerment, I think, shooting guns that close to homes. I missed us, but I don't want it to hit a neighbor besides us. It seems like it could happen again easily.
Almost certainly, there would be something like that, and we'll begin some conversations with people to see if there isn't something that can be done, but thank you for letting us...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to make any comments now? Hope there's no more here and firearms. When we move on to item number four, which is discussion and update on the status of the compilation for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. That's the end of the sentence period. Mr. Curtis. Mr. Spott. No, she sees what it is. There it is. No microphone again, I apologize.
Oh, that's all right. I'm just assuming I'll have one anyway. Just kind of give you guys an update, you know, on where I'm at with this compilation. I anticipated being done somewhere around first of the year. I was running for some roadblocks on it, we have some things we haven't worked on. I know I talked to Pam, he tried to put me under a hard deadline. I know I couldn't because I wasn't exactly sure what I was going to run into up here, but I'm going to need about three, four more weeks. And that's pretty much what I have to present. I mean, I answered questions you guys may have.
Can you... My understanding that part of the delay, and I'm only taking kind of what I hear in the hallway, it's as rough as gospel this point, was that there was essentially no depreciation being performed right here or so, and there were just little things like that, not little things like...
Well, depreciation and fixed assets probably what he was eating on lunch right now.
Just time consuming.
Yeah, I got a little printout kind of to tell you, show you here what, kind of where I'm at. As you can see there, the items in the center in the block there, when I bid this job, you know, I kind of made some assumptions that I might not have, should have, you know, before when Pam was here, you know, she always, you know, had depreciations. She had a lot of this stuff prepared for me, and so when I figured my time estimate, I kind of assumed you were going to do it.
This is your first time back with us since...
Yeah, I did the audit, just kind of, some of you may know me, some of you may not. I did the audit from '08, '09, and '10, and then when the independence standards changed, you know, we felt like we couldn't prepare the financial and do the audit too, so I started doing the compilation, and I did it for '11, '12, and '13, I believe. I'm not a stranger to the city of Tlalcoa, but we are, like I said, we've got some changes that we're...
We have almost historically, last year, we, I think, went into August, which was very much an aberration. We historically go to February or March really anyway, and we know that that's a possibility sometimes, and I'll say it, with Mr. Barry and the Romans, not his fault, but occasionally our proponent units, they have the same exact deadline for submission of their audits that we have. They'll hit their deadline, but leave us unvoiced on some of the documents.
Yeah, and I'm not here to make excuses or anything, I'm just here to let you know. Probably the worst thing I can do is not communicate to you guys where I'm at and how, what the progress is.
And what I'm doing is communicating that nobody's truly worried as much as they are. They're probably overreacting.
You know, I don't want to, you know...
Not that that's unheard of around here or anything, but, and we know Mr. Green is with us tonight too, and he's done a good job for us for years, even including some very difficult years, and we're looking forward to having a product as quick as we can.
Can I just interject a second?
You may, yes ma'am.
Mr. Spires and I have worked together off and on, and I want to say since about 2004, I think that's about just far back from back in the numbers, so we have a long working history together, and I've always known Mr. Spires to deliver a quality product in the end, so every now and then he throws a bump along the way, but he always gets to the destination.
We're consistently sixty to ninety days, quote-unquote, behind, but it'll be fine, so...
Okay, well, you guys, you know, like I say, I don't care to answer any questions or talk to anybody about where I'm at in the process, so you guys can feel free to...
You don't care... Say that again, I'm sorry. You don't mind answering questions?
I don't mind answering questions to anyone. I don't know what I said.
I think you said that backwards.
I feel like I'm, you know, before a judge up here at this podium.
Well, suddenly I am concerned.
You know, I like numbers to level it up. There again, I'm available if anybody wants to speak to me about anything.
Appreciate it. If you have any questions, Mr. Spires? Or Ms. Curtis? Or Mr. Green? Or anybody who fancies themselves to be a bookkeeper or county CPA?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I hear you. Ms. Curtis, do you have any comments you would like to make, or will we move on?
I do not at this time, but I think I'm next.
Are you next? I didn't move in, I apologize, okay. Now, they will, after that's a report or update, we'll move on to item number five, which is discussion and possible action to accept the engagement letter to hire Mr. Green CPA to perform the city's audit for fiscal year 2016, '17. Ms. Curtis?
You were presented with a letter from Mr. Green. If he's here, if you have any questions pertaining to that document itself, but like his range, what his cost could be, and there is a range because of past experiences. I believe it's between seventeen-five and twenty-three thousand would be the fee that would be assessed.
So if we adopt this letter of engagement, twenty-three would be as high as we would go, and it would be as low as the other, of course.
And now the timeline is a little bit different as well. I believe he says his timeline would be May.
Okay.
You've got fifteen to eighteen.
All right, I'm hearing letterings, but I can't quite make out what they are.
It actually says that he will not be able to perform substantial field work until after April fifteenth.
I see, okay.
He would expect to have the audit complete by the end of May.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, that is in there just in case, Mayor. We're in the middle of tax season, hopefully we can get it done quicker. That's the plan.
That's a worst-case scenario.
Saying, who told us it'd be done?
X wires or something, so... Well, last year, we knew we had, again, an aberration, a strange year, and we don't want there to be any misunderstandings that that was anything to do with you. You did great making sure that we got an audit as quickly as possible, and we appreciate that very much, and putting that in the engagement letter sets some standards so that everyone is aware of when you think you could have it.
It's a safety measure.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I didn't want you thinking that it's going to be done quickly because it is tax season and various in the process right now getting it completed. But we do expect to start them as soon as you guys are ready, and if the engagement is approved tonight, we will go ahead and start the procedures that we can. For example, confirmation forms can be sent up to the banks and all that, so it'll get in the process. There was a fee increase. We had over two hundred hours in this last year, and it was a big thing. I don't think we'll have that much time in it this year, but it's not just the city, it's the fact that auditing, Lanny would be able to back me up, it's getting more difficult every year, the regulations and those kind of things, so things are just costing more.
Mr. Green, the filing fee, that's in...
That's separate.
That's a state audit fee?
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars. I think it's a hundred dollars right there. That's a fee they charge for us that you're requiring to file with the weeks completed, so maybe better to accept it. Figures attached to it?
Uh, yeah, just accept the letter. If they're in the letter, then we should be reset. I know that we've got, you've got some satisfied customers in Westville still, I was talking with their mayor today, and he's very happy.
We've had some struggles with Westville, it's a similar situation, but...
There was a slightly nervous chuckle, but they were fully confident in you to get them through it, so they're very happy with the work. Yeah, we would entertain a motion.
So, second?
A motion and approval, uh, second, I'm sorry, for approval or acceptance of this engagement letter from Mr. Green. Is there, I'm sorry, clerk, I have a second. Any questions or comments? I'm not my name, so your clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Blith?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get started on...
We appreciate it. Mr. Spires, thank you too, sir.
Mayor, we had a question, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
At the end of your agenda, there's a discussion on the audits for '16 and '17. Is that something that I needed to ask?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's your item, and if you feel satisfied, we can...
Yeah, no, I have to put that on there, but these are actually everybody's getting ready for.
Thank you, sir. Next up is item six, which is presentation of the 2017 Telpho Fire Department Annual Report.
Yes, so we, you've all been provided with a copy of the annual report. Took a little bit of a different approach this year, kind of made it a little more visual, so you can kind of see some of the things that you, that sometimes are out of the norm. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them at this time. With the report, I felt like that this is the largest number of runs we've had in the since the existence of the department, and we also, at this point, from January one until now, we've had fifteen structured fire calls unprecedented, we just don't have that many, so fire calls are increasing.
Is there something you're not willing to see in the report? I don't have a copy.
You do not?
No.
Let me make sure you have one.
Now I have five copies. We'll get it redistributed.
I apologize.
I know, it's okay, I was probably out and out for rounds. This looks good. Do you have any questions of the chief?
No, I think it looks very good. Very good. To let the pub, I hope that these are going to be available to the public at some point, because it's very good to let the public to see.
You guys live out on the first.
Looks very good. If there aren't any other questions, then we will, I think Chief, are you through with that item?
Yes.
The presentation, okay. We then move on to item number seven, which is presentation of meritorious awards to Assistant Fire Chief Casey Baker, Firefighter Jesus Nava, Police Officer Casey McKinney, Police Officer Brian Qualls, and Police Officer Matt Fritz. Mr. Hammond, Chief Hammond.
Okay, on the thirteenth of January 2018, about 2:30, 3:00, we received a call of a structure fire located on 1219 East Boulevard. This was a familiar address, as we had to respond there before several times before, and it was always under suspicious or precarious circumstances, so the police was dispatched as well. Upon arrival, Police Officers Casey McKinney, Matt Fritz, and Brian Qualls immediately approached the house, noticing large amounts of smoke coming from the rear end of the structure, asking the whole time if anyone was still inside. The response was yes. There were two more, an elderly lady and a boyfriend of one of the girls that lived there. By this time, the entire house was full of smoke, and without hesitation, Officers McKinney, Fritz, and Qualls, and Firefighter Nava entered the house, making a complete search to evacuate the structure, during which Assistant Chief Baker entered the building to get everyone out due to the large amount of smoke and heat. While evacuating the house, Chief Baker noticed a body lying on the couch in the living room. He immediately started trying to revive the young man, but he was incapacitated and unable to leg on his own. So as he was dragging the man to safety, two officers then assisted him in dragging this gentleman to the front of the door, as Jesus Nava was attacking the fully engulfed bedroom at the end of the hall. It was with courage and bravery, along with quickness, these five men did their job without hesitation, and as such, they risked their lives to make sure that the residents were out of harm's way, all while making sure they had each other's back and watching out for one another. Again, this was a questionable call at a questionable location, known for possible dangerous situations. Yet the professionalism of both firefighters and police officers were simply amazing. The scene ran very smoothly from an incident point of view, from the truck position and set-up operation EMS standby to support and water supply. At the end of the day, everyone walked away, except for the one guy that was incapacitated, but EMS took him, took care of him. Not only was I able to witness the performance by these men firsthand, by being there, but due to the body camera footage provided by the police department, I was able to review what happened step by step, and I was very glad to say that these men went above and beyond to do their job. And the city of Tlalcoa and the citizens of Tlalcoa should feel both proud and safe that these gentlemen and others like them are standing watch over them, willing to risk their lives to keep us safe. And when I call your name, if you would please come up, it is my honor and privilege to recognize Officer Brian Qualls, Officer Casey McKinney, Officer Matt Fritz, Firefighter Jesus Nava, and Assistant Chief Casey Baker, to present them with the Tlalco Fire Department Meritorious Award for the last annual performance on January 13th, 2018. Hey, you have to turn around, got me all backwards.
Barry, you want to next?
Uh, no, he's down to the word.
One, two, three.
At the end of my note, I'd like to mention that I see a lot of departments across the state, working on our departments, sometimes there's a lot of friction between the two departments because of just how they get along, and it's a blessing to be able to work in a town where the police and fire work together in a brother-sisterhood town way to make sure that their job is done correctly, and we know that we can count on each other, and it doesn't always happen that way, and our city's blessed to have you, so...
I've been fortunate enough to know a couple of those gentlemen for that strange call, Vaughn, from my perspective, Jesus, a gentleman, he was a soccer player for me when he was ten, he was about seventeen, and to see him carrying on the tradition of service to these communities makes me proud there, and Casey, of course, we go back quite ways, and Mr. Qualls ran around the woods with us the other day, got to know him when we were exploring some of the trails, and every, every buddy in both of those departments deserves a lot of respect and admiration for what they do for this community. Thank you again, we very much appreciate it.
Chief, you're okay, you sat back down. We will go to item number eight, which is discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of Gary Chapman from the Tlalco Hospital Authority Board of Trustees. My name after, just because there's technically speaking a, I will stop here, if anyone would like to take their leave from the room after the presentation, I'll be quiet for a moment so you can do that.
Oh, I forgot to wear it. Sorry.
We might be done, all right?
Good job.
Yeah, okay. Congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Everybody that left, we need to go home. Again, we are just here to accept the resignation of Mr. Gary Chapman, a longtime member of the Tlalco Hospital Authority Board of Trustees. It's just a little bit of housekeeping at this point, he's going to no longer serve, and all we need to do is acknowledge that resignation. We have a motion to do that.
Thank you.
I think I got about three or four here thrown at me. I think Councilor Combs had the motion, and then Councilor Hires reset. Okay, and we'll take a vote.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Blith?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I do want to say very quickly, it's been a long period of service, I'm trying to look around the poll, how long has he had service?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, I would guess even longer than that, and he's had an outsized impact on that institution, and we certainly appreciate his service. We get to say thank you to the Chapman family, because, some more, because of item number nine, we're going to have some discussion, discussion and possible action to accept the appointment of Susan Chapman Long for the Tlalco Hospital Authority Board of Trustees. Did I make a mistake? Did we have a roll call?
Yes.
We did, okay, great. To the Board of Trustees as the replacement for that seat. We have a motion from Councilor Combs and a second from Councilor Long, and thank you for agreeing to fulfill that, and roll. Clerk, what's your roll call, please?
Councilor Blith?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just so everyone knows, that was also a firefighter that was working the mop as well, so they're pretty well, they other duties at the time, they save people alive and clean up messes, and they do it all. Item number ten, is discussion in, I'm sorry, discussion to, I need to rephrase that, the agenda discussion about ordinance number 1252, 2018, rezoning the property located on southwest corner of the intersection of West Fourth Street and Stickross Highway Road from two family dwelling district R2 to general dwelling district C2. Mr. Johnson, you're here with us, but I think that the words should be discussion on ordinance number 1252, 2018. Correct? It's a first reading?
Yeah, it's a first, discussion only.
And I do want to point out, I know that there are many people here for this particular item, and just to make sure everybody understands before we start it, that there won't be a vote taken this evening that will most likely have to happen one way or the other of our meeting.
And am I missing an ordinance? Is there an ordinance included in the...
It's in there, it should be there, I'm for sure.
I've got a staff report, just be right, a staff report, right up in that. It's one page. No, sir. It didn't make it.
No, it didn't. Oh, okay. It's a pretty straightforward ordinance, I mean, it's a standard rezoning ordinance with a special use attached or something.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was our conference, I apologize. I'm going to confuse things, but go ahead, I apologize.
The eleventh, the next one.
They did not make it. I don't give you the package. Well, it's a first reading slash discussion, and some of the...
Go ahead and discuss.
...they play over the next two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's safe to say that the majority of people left remaining aren't here for this item like you mentioned. We actually had this at two separate planning and zoning meetings. It was tabled the first meeting in December, it came back this month. Both meetings, unfortunately, we only had three members present. It's still a quorum, but it does play a role in the vote count, and so, first meeting it was tabled, the second meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to deny the approval. But let me, I guess, let me back up and say where this is, it's at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Fourth and Stickross Road. If you are familiar with that area, there's a small church, it's recently known as the Riverside Ministries, I believe is what it is, and so the applicant is requesting a C2 zoning district because that is the minimum zoning district required for the use as a electrical plumbing, heating and cooling cells and services. It specifically has that permitted use in the C2 zoning category, and so that's what they had to ask for. That location, as you know, we're expanding West Fourth, it's a major arterial street, and Stickross is becoming one itself, and so it's inviting for commercial, however, it's, the parcel is completely surrounded by R1 single-family zoned property, and so it was one of the less straightforward requests that we've received, and that is probably why there's so many people here, and there were so many people at the both planning and zoning commission meetings. Obviously, the neighbors came out overwhelmingly opposed, and then the people that have an interest in the property, the property owner, the business that's trying to acquire the property, the contract is contingent upon the rezone, they all definitely spoke about why it should be allowed. Some of the points made during the planning and zoning meetings were, we've allowed the rezoning of several parcels of property along West Fourth to go from residential to commercial recently. Some of the issues against that were mentioned were traffic and unsightliness of that kind of a business, so staff's recommendation, it wasn't necessarily to rezonate, but if it was to rezoned, our recommendation was a special use zoning district for that particular permitted use, heating, cooling, electrical cells and services in the C2 district, and so... With that, do you have any questions?
Well, I think, if I may just state that I think this may be indicative of a larger problem we might be facing, in that there was a period of time when churches were built purposely in residential neighborhoods and zoned as such, and some of these churches are... one of my younger sisters, went to a daycare.
Yeah, I heard that.
An R2 zoning, and yet she was nonconforming, had a nonconforming use for, I guess, a dozen or so years.
Yeah, you could do an in-home daycare. I know it sounds like it was more, was it specific use for the daycare?
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, I think we just need to ask ourselves, does that fit proper land use in that area in the way Talquaw's doing?
That's always the question with the rezones. The, we drive, the church ran back and forth to Gooey Village, and so I pass it twice a week at least. And one of my riders would always say, "That's a really busy church, especially for so small of a building." And I mean, every week, that remark would be made. And so I know there's been traffic out of, in and out consistently, at least on Sundays and Wednesday nights, I would assume, Brandon, for a few years. So it's not like it has been totally bereft of traffic before. And then you can, we're expanding the road, and then the flip side is totally surrounded by R1. And it is just because we've done other commercial rezonings down the road, I always try to use these as a teachable moment because it upsets those things and that leads inevitably to creep. And you can hopscotch these justifications to the point where they don't make any sense. So I'll just make everybody mad by saying things on both sides of the equation, and we have two weeks to figure out what we want to do.
When you're citing the other rezones that we've done down the road, you're talking about the storage, the minimal. Now, we did a store, they, there was a request for storage units and we did not...
Denied that one. There was 13 acres of vacant property.
That's a... That's behind that storage unit?
No, it's just west of this property. I believe it's right west of Roselle, where those duplexes are.
That was the Fisher property.
I believe so, yeah.
It's off. It's at the front.
Well, the front edge, it's empty. It's vacant property.
Okay.
It's for sale, apparently.
Mr. Johnson, what would be the caveat with the special use zoning district for C2?
So that's, that would be the recommendation if you chose to rezon it, it would be to only allow that use of that heating, cooling, electrical, plumbing, supplies and services.
So if the company in question decides that the location's not good enough, you're now leaving away then?
We don't get a liquor store there. We don't get a...
They can only have another company.
Yeah, another electrical or heating and air or somebody that, similar business.
We stipulate that in that event that it would resell back to its original...
I don't know that answer. Answer for granted.
Both of us are a little nervous because I don't really like, because then we have to rely on, it could be 15, 20 years from now.
Well, I'm just curious.
Yeah, but functionally speaking, it'd be very difficult, I think, to track that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that aspect.
It might be legally permissible.
Are you talking like heat restrictions that we're talking about?
I was gonna say, further, there could be a requirement by the current owner to put a place on the property as part of the deal or something like that.
We don't play into that arena.
Exactly. Yeah, right.
I know there are a lot of people that are interested to discuss this item.
I figured we'd get there.
And I had a quick question, chief. One of the emails I think we all received from a woman that lives in that area went as far as fencing or blocking because obviously heat and air equipment, typically they have equipment outside that can be considered by some to be an ISO. So is there any type of ordinance or anything on the books that would, just like we have the dumpster ordinance?
So the requirement specifically says that they have to put up a fence between them and an adjacent residential lot. It's open to the interpretation on whether or not they have to fence a yard and all that has to stay in the yard. Now, we also have an ordinance that you can't leave a freezer or a washer or a furnace just sitting out in the yard in the weather because that's abandoned property. And so that'd be a code enforcement violation. During the planning and zoning meetings, that came up time and time again. And the business owners and operators committed time and time again that they're gonna build a privacy fenced yard for any of that kind of material to be stored in. Do we have the mechanisms to hold them accountable to that? I mean, I think we can get there. But just to flat out say you have to build a privacy fenced yard doesn't say that. They have to build a privacy fence in between them and their residence adjacent.
It also gets very difficult because you can get pretty capricious and arbitrary really fast about the standards you apply to people. I mean, it's really just a land use question is all we're trying to sell. And to put those stipulations on, again, pretty problematic because the next person that comes along, or next applicant that comes along, and we don't make them do it, that makes this applicant angry. And I know we have our reasons, but, and I've been as guilty of it as anybody in the past coming along with those things, about learned and evolved over years on that. And it really needs to remain strictly focused on land use, I think. But, because we do have trouble also enforcing those things.
The only problem, though, we get in with just trying to be as clear cut as that is because we've already started talking about that special use when we're thinking about just this type of business. And I think we all recognize that those old units and things like that go somewhere. And we've seen it at different heating and air and electrical places. So it's an understandable concern, but I do think we have the mechanisms to address it.
Through code.
Through code enforcement, yeah.
Yeah. So walk this back for me for a minute because I don't think I'm understanding. The recommendation is, or by code, they have to put the fence up between...
Them and an adjacent residential.
The west side and the south side?
That's correct.
Of the property?
The west side property's like 40 feet above.
Right.
Yeah, I usually live in a house behind it. And I shoot my bow and arrow off the...
But then the highest that they can put a fence would be 18.
It's 60, and then they have to, there'd be quarter adjustments for 8.
So that's, that would be the required thing to do. But then, so what you're saying is we shouldn't then require them to fence the lot or fence the area?
Not through a zoning mechanism.
No. What you're saying is later if they violated, if they made a property piece, they'd be fined for that.
Well, he was asking about my question. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So yours doesn't have anything to do with like the actual, like the west and the south fence? You're not, you're not saying that?
No, that's without question because it's already in a pre-existing ordinance. I was just speaking to Councilor Long's point about can we make it a stipulation of the rezoning? And we've learned our lessons over the years that those are unenforceable, they can get very random, and it's just not advised. I've learned plenty of...
What are the zones adjacent to this?
It's all our own.
Okay. But why?
So all the new homes that were built on Stickross and Fourth would, there would be no fence structure there because they would not be, they would not meet the requirement?
There would be no required fence structure there. And I, my understanding from the information from planning and zoning is that's the ingress that they would choose to use is off Stickross and not Fourth. So they want to come in and off of Stickross to do their daily business. It's my understanding from what they told us in meetings.
Planning and zoning denied this the first time?
That's correct.
They recommended to not.
Correct. And without full board, correct.
Correct.
Will they meet on this again?
Not unless you guys don't, too. Unless we remand it. Which, we have examples of three and four member votes being taken before for some random circumstances. It's not unprecedented. It's odd that it was two in a row and probably not particularly confidence inspiring. And we'll address that. But it's possible you could justify pushing it back to them because of that circumstance, but it probably just needs, I mean, I'll just assume that it would need to remain here. That'd be my recommendation.
You guys are the decision makers.
Right.
And I can get you the information that you need to make that decision, so.
I know that there are people probably, as Mr. Johnson alluded to, wanting to make a statement or two, and we'll try to keep it limited to that. Yeah, you can feel it. And we'll do our best to keep it channeled and focused and short. Anytime we have an issue like this, we have to start kind of getting a little, a monster coming in and limiting the amount of time that everyone has to speak because otherwise we'll be here till, you know, midnight or something, and this is not practical. And we do have another opportunity in a couple of weeks for those who, you know, have new information or decided they want to say something or to do so then. Is the applicant here? Would they like to say something very quickly? I mean, there's no, there's no requirement, but they certainly...
May I be permitted to turn a order around so that everybody can really have a visual on where this property is located?
Go ahead and do that very quickly. And would there be anybody else who'd want to make a comment? Brandon, you seem to be approaching the podium. Mr. Stratton, floor is yours for a couple minutes.
Okay. Well, as you said, my name is Brandon Stratton. I'm the current owner of the property. I'm also the pastor of the River Ministries. And, you know, I sent an email to all of you, all the council members and the mayor, and I hope you've got those. Clint did an excellent job of communicating everything, and I thank the mayor for his response to my email also. I just wanted to say a couple of things. The first thing that I really ask, I know that you guys are gonna hear this and you're gonna render a decision based on information given. And I do want to state, I guess, upsetness, I don't know if that's a word or not, but about the lack of members present at both zoning meetings. Clint can verify this information, but I know at the December meeting, the reason they tabled it was really because they didn't understand properly how to conduct a meeting. Like they had to have a discussion about Robert Schule's of order and like, to me, that's unprofessional to, when you have just a few people show up to make decisions about people's livelihoods. And so they tabled it, then come into January and have the same amount of people present, and one of the people flipped their decision from the previous month, and, you know, here we are. So what I'm saying about that is, number one, I'm asking you as a council to hear this really without a bias to the zoning commission's recommendation because I feel that it is, it's not an accurate recommendation based on the full members of said board. Or really, even in a matter of professionalism, I feel that what should have been done is say, you know what, we made a mistake in December and didn't really know how to conduct this meeting properly. So what we should do is pass this to the city council without a decision. Because here we are in the same boat again that we were in in December that we didn't make a decision on. So that's my opinion about that, and I did want to state that for the record, that I felt like that was, you know, when you're spending money and you're asking people to make decisions about your livelihood, you know, it's nice that it's public servants, and you guys are all here so you know this, but for people to show up, I understand their circumstances. One person had the flu. I get that. You know, you don't want to infect everybody. But the comment was made before we started by the Chair, Susan Riles. She said, "I don't think so-and-so showing up, like, why'd you just drove by their house and they're working on their fence and their yard?" I don't feel that that's acceptable. And I don't know if that's truly what he was doing, but, I mean, you were there.
Yeah, just to, for the record, too, I'm not trying to dispute the majority of what you said, but I would say that the Chair, Susan Riles, I think, ultimately had it tabled. But first go around to hope that more members would come to the second meeting. She was at both, so for her credit. And her ultimate decision, she tabled originally to get more people a chance to get there, and then, well, her ultimate decision was not. So I, for all due respect, I think that she at least gave a chance for the other members to show.
Yeah, and I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying the fact that they didn't, that we didn't have a full... But with that said, there's a couple of things, and I'll be really quick. I've lived in Talquaw. I'm 41 years old. I've lived here 38 years of my life. When you travel up and down Fourth Street, I know, and now, take, I know that some of them are zoned R2, R3, some of them are commercial. I understand that. But when you start at one end of Fourth Street and you go from Muskogee to the spur, there is clearly more businesses, apartments, living centers than there are houses. And I feel that there's a precedence. Fourth Street is also one of the main thoroughfares in Talquaw. It's one of the few roads that go all the way through town. I believe also that the fact that we're widening that, we're building, we're reworking the infrastructure of that property, not our property, but of Fourth Street, I think speaks to the volume of traffic it already receives. And I believe that a precedence has been set of what Fourth Street looks like now and in the future. And I know that there's some residential places beside us, and, but one of them's a rental, and I know we're getting into, you know, specifics here, but it's a rental property. That's a, that's a form of business. And I know it's a residential, but I think also when you look at the current construction, I mean, right now, my parking lot is a disaster. I think, I mean, I never gave anybody permission and they're just, I mean, you can't even, they're routing traffic through my property right now. So in my opinion, the city is already treating that property as commercial property, parking equipment on it. We're using it, we're actually routing the property through, if this is a resident, my yard. All the traffic that goes down Fourth Street goes through my yard, which is not, it's a parking lot to a church. But I think, I'm just saying there's a precedence. I feel like it's been set and is there what that property looks like. I did a little research, and I don't know exactly how far we go back, but in 1989 or '90, Cornerstone Fellowship was founded, and they founded out of that property there. I've been told that there was two other churches that met there before Cornerstone. But at least for the last 30 years, that property has either been a church or it's been two different daycares at two different times. That is not a home. It's not a residential piece of property, even though it technically is zoned as one. It's not one, nor has it been one in my lifetime. And I guess I ask the question is, you know, when something has been allowed to be a daycare, it's been allowed to be treated as something other than residential, what's our responsibility when you look back, all of a sudden now we're gonna enforce something we haven't enforced for 40 years? You know, we're looking at this, and I don't know if I said that properly, but I just think about things like that. When you, when you look at a piece of property that has been something that long, and then, you know, two other things, and I'll be quick, Welling Services can speak on their behalf, but I know the plan that they're presenting to do to the property enhances that property. You know, every single person that I've showed this property to, the Park and Real Estate that we've met, that we showed the property, every single person, at least six different people, have been interested in that property for some sort of business, some sort of, we've had a CPA look at it, we've had a daycare look at it, and we've had different people look at it. Not one person has said, "Oh, that's gonna be my future home." You know, that is a commercial parking lot out there. It's a block building, and, you know, I just, I just feel we have to take those things into consideration when we really look at the nuts and bolts of rezoning this property. I think we have to look at the time span of the last 40 to 50 years of the history of that building and say, what has it been? And I think that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to share and ask you guys to consider. And I respectfully do so. I know you guys do this for a living and watch out for our city, and I know that you will, you know, you'll make the right decision at the end of the day, but these are the that we've met, that we showed the property, every single person, at least six different people, have been interested in that property for some sort of business, some sort of, we've had a CPA look at it, we've had a daycare look at it, and we've had different people look at it. Not one person has said, "Oh, that's going to be my future home." You know, that is a commercial parking lot out there. It's a block building, and, you know, I just, I just feel we have to take those things into consideration when we really look at the nuts and bolts of rezoning this property. I think we have to look at the time span of the last 40 to 50 years of the history of that building and say, what has it been? And I think that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to share and ask you guys to consider, and I respectfully do so. I know you guys are, do this for a living and watch out for our city, and I know that you will, you know, you'll make the right decision at the end of the day, but these are the points of view that I come from as a seller. Right now, I have a property that's not, I can't sell that as a residential property. And you could say, "Well, that's your fault for buying it." Maybe so, but at the end of the day, you know, when I, when I bought the property, I didn't even check the zoning, because I've lived here, like I said, out of 41 years, 38 years, and it's never been, you know, it's always been what it is. And so I never even thought about, "Oh, I'm not going to be able to sell this property." And the reality is, I would still be there, but we outgrew it. We just could not, as he said, the traffic that we had in and out of, we met four times a week, we had a, we had a Bible school that met once a week, we had services Sunday morning, Sunday night, Tuesday night, we had a youth Thursday night, and we had a Bible school out of there on Wednesdays. The traffic in and out of there, I mean, we, we put the place to the max. I could not even park. We couldn't fill the building for parking alone, and so we really just got into a situation where it's like, okay, we've got to relocate out of here. We've, anyways, are there any questions?
That was going to be my, my question. Council, any questions? Mr. Stratton?
Your email was very helpful and informative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Is there anyone here who's not particularly in favor, I guess, involved by the proposition? Mr. Uzo, you raise your hand first. Would you like to make any comments?
Yes.
And again, I'll try to ask everybody to be as brief as possible.
Oh, pardon me.
I really need to cut them off before we...
The mayor and council members, I strongly object to this rezoning application. We do that, planning and zoning, we had an hour's worth of dialogue back and forth and references use, and it was already set up as a duplex, the church went in there, nobody said anything about it. It's, the traffic's there, regarding what's in the front yards irrelevant, as you indicated, act of nature, get my parking, because I have dust all the time because I'm going harder. But the whole idea, that's the cost of progress. But the fact of it is, you know, there's no reason to make it that way. I don't want to look out at my backyard and see a plumbing and air conditioning close, okay? And I think it's unfair. It was R2, and all I'm asking you to do is leave it the way it was and not switch it to another area so an individual can be in there. And once you set a precedent for that, who knows what's going to happen? That is a very congested, dangerous area when you come off Stick Cross and attempt to make a left or right. I think the additional anger remedy part of that. But it is, right now, I see no logical reason, and I strongly request that you oppose this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Uzo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Any other, very quick remarks? I saw a hand go up there behind me, and go ahead and just kind of tell us your name, and, oh, I missed you, Will, behind that is Paul. I apologize.
Yeah, my name's Anthony Pritchett. I live directly behind the building that they're talking about. And I said, one of the things my concern was with school site, you know, had them having equipment, not really equipment, but their air conditioning units sitting around everywhere. I was concerned about materials, concerned about free on leaking out of all over the place. I said, we, there's animals that run around there, and I'm worried about, they said rats and stuff like that, because it didn't take a rat very long to build a nest. And I know that they said that they would get rid of that stuff in a timely order, but what's a timely order? And I said, we talked about the fences, and I know that, I think if I heard you guys right, said you guys couldn't enforce them to build a fence, privacy fence, but even if they did build a privacy fence, deeper fence, my house sits high enough up here that I can see over any foot fence. And as he said, as he brought it up, I don't really want to see a business there. And that's one of my main concerns like that. Firstly, they also brought up the fact that this end of Fourth Street is commercial, this end of Fourth Street. Well, only this side of Fourth Street is, is commercial, and this side is commercial. All the way to Fourth Street that way isn't all commercial. And plus with that, Muskogee runs down the center of Talquaw. That's where all the businesses are. And I said, the only reason that street is that busy is because Cherokee Nation has put that workout place there. And I said, if that wasn't in there, like I said, someone, I think someone suggested opening another road up to the other side around there that people would use the bypass. And I, and for myself, I thought that's what the bypass was for, where people could go around that way, not come through residential traffic, or congest residential traffic.
Paul, I appreciate your... Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to make a comment to the fact that 5:00 at that intersection of Hillcrest, Stick Cross, and Fourth is...
It's pretty congested. I feel, yeah, I trust them, I know I lived there. And like I said, I said, I've been there forever. I know, I know, they mentioned that all their equipment and stuff would be at their side or where they're working at, and I'm saying, that's, like I said, that's not just the issue. You know, I'm just worried about, like I said, site, if they was to put up a privacy fence, would it be chain link or would it be board? And if it's chain link fence, you can still see all the unsightly stuff there, if they have air conditioners manning around everywhere. If it's a privacy fence, you're just going to find hoods to come down and spray paint, and it's still going to make the town...
Well, thank you very much. We'll try to move along pretty quickly. I'm sorry to, probably cut you off there, but we appreciate you making some comments. We'll, very, very quickly. And before you get started, I just want to make, I want to clarify, the fence is required on the south and west side. It's what we can't enforce are the east and north side.
Let me start these real quick. So these are just really simple artistry reasons for an empty property. So my name is Will Peterson. I was born and raised in Talquaw. I graduated from Talquaw High School in 2004. I've done quite a few services with the community growing up. I was in Boy Scouts, through the Troop 743 here in Talquaw. I'm an Eagle Scout through men, so I did a service project with the Health and Crisis Center on Jones Avenue. I, I feel like I'm a very trustworthy person, and I know that there's a lot of people in this town that have used us, a lot of very important people, a lot of everyday people that could vouch for that. We're not going to put a business there that's going to be unsightly. It's going to be an office use. We're not going to be storing equipment there. We don't have the buying power to just buy equipment and hold it there. A customer agrees to a job, we get that equipment from our distributor to supply, and we take it to the job when it's time to start that job. We don't have heavy equipment that we're going to be storing on the property. We don't have any cranes or any excavators or anything, you know, bobcats, anything like that. I know the cus, the residents around the property were concerned about that, and I can vouch that, you know, their concerns are invalid. We're not going to do that to them, you know? There was one concern at the rezoning meeting, it had blighty. And it was a lady that was concerned about what would happen to the property if we didn't move out of it, you know? And I didn't really know either until tonight, when Mr. Johnson explained it can only be reused as that property unless, obviously, it's rezoned again, you know, and you have to come back to here to do that. And we don't plan on leaving it, you know? We've been in Welling, using my dad's property since the early 90s, and I started as an apprentice in high school, and then went to college at NSU, and then in 2009, decided to work full-time with a rental license. So since 2006, he's been running this business full-time out of Welling, and we'd like to bring that business to Talquaw, and this is an opportunity that presents itself to us, and we hope that you would consider it for us. I know that you rezoned this. I'm kind of nervous, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I think they're more concerned about, like, when you go to do a repair replacement, like the condensers and things that you removed from the, the broken down junk that you bring back, that you've got to do something with.
We, we take that to Robbins Recycling. You know, you have to recover the refrigerant out of it before you do that, but at that point, we take it to Robbins Recycling, because that's the only place that makes logical sense. You're recycling, you do get a little bit of money for it as well, and, and you're not taking it just to the trash, you know? They're going to reuse that, that metal, that copper, you know, whatever they can do. So we're not restoring, you know, the equipment that gets changed out, that's property. We take that to recycling place when we get done, so.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah, when you say not to store an equipment, I understood you to say that it's not going to be backhoes and lifts and things of that nature, but do you also mean, like Counselor Long mentioned, you know, the actual units themselves, you're not going to be storing that, whether they're new or...
Exactly.
Or old.
We're going to have...
So primarily office space?
Super grand office space, and then the, the old section that used to be the congregational, you know, meeting place, we might use that for storage for small parts, blow our motors, condensers. So that if we have access, we'll put there, you know?
So put nothing in the yard?
Nothing in the yard, yeah, it'll be inside, you know?
Now, would you fill the, the two-legged chair or two-legged stool? And what I'm getting at is this, are you going to put two sections of privacy fence up, or are you going to encompass the, at least the back?
I really don't see putting it on, on Fourth Street. To me, that'd be unsightly, to have a, and it quite possibly be dangerous to have...
And by, you create a side triangle, you know, thought about earlier?
Yeah, you lose traffic side from Fourth Street to Stick Cross, you know? So it would just be on the south side and the west side, you know? And I, I'm always up for, you know, suggestions from neighbors if there, if there was any problems with it.
And then one, one remark on that, too, is you may be right, it may not, the fence may not come very far out.
I mean, on the Stick Cross side, not actually.
The Fourth Street side?
I was trying to, my best effort at a careful question.
It's, it's hard to say, yeah. So is it not the fence? Then, where's Brandon? This pole is killing me. Everybody that I need to talk to, you guys behind the pole. The, to that point, it's possible we're parking things on, on easement right-of-way that you may not be aware that we actually own. And sometimes that happens, too. And I'm not even saying, and you don't have to come to press back on that statement. I do not know.
I'm familiar, I would, you know, I own the property when we sold the right-of-way for the project.
Right.
Which was eight feet of it there. But no, they're full-on.
Just your property? Again, you don't, I don't know on where to...
And the traffic's routed through there, you know, they're routed, which, you know, personally, I'm part of this town, I don't mind some of that, but no permission was...
Well, again, there's no reason for us to, I'm just throwing it out as a hypothetical, and because, I mean, the other's the fence question, too, about where that would end up.
If you're looking into, we're concerned about traffic, there's, we have three service trucks, and there's four others. There's my mother, my dad, my brother, and then we have three employees. So if we have three service trucks and our employees parked vehicles in there today, then that's, you know, six people is possibly going in and out of there, which I, you know, that's probably less than a church has to go in and out of there. It's not like we're an ambulatory service where we're in, out, in, out. Generally, we'll meet there, and then we're going to be out doing service call to service call all day, and we might meet back there at the end of the day, drop our employees off, and then we meet at home.
Any other questions, Mr. Pritchett? Thank you, sir. We'll be back in a couple of weeks, and I guess it'll be the 5th of February, and there'll be a decision made then. Counselors, unless you want to make any other comments, we will move along. Mr. Johnson, are you satisfied?
Yep.
And we'll go to item 11, which is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1253, 2018, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of the intersection of North Cedar Avenue and Deedrich Lane from single family dwelling District R1 to multiple family dwelling District R3.
Well, thank you, Mayor. If you think you're having a case of déjà vu or you're not, we have already had this ordinance read twice, voted on, thought we had it tucked away, and come to find out that it wasn't published within the 14-day period that's required by state statute. So we, without risking anything, we're just going to run it right back through the course, and I'm going to hope that we all just stay the course and vote the same way we did, and we don't turn this into a bigger mishap than it should be.
Can I say a motion?
Sure. Well, no, we can't do it. We, this has to be...
Oh, that's right. Okay, sorry. I need that.
So I promise that, in order to be consistent, I will keep my vote, but I think I was...
I think so.
It was long.
We'll just leave it at that.
And this one's going to go, it's going to take a, or free to come back March 5th, because we have to also do the mail notifications and a public hearing, which will be on March 5th.
And I've been, I've tried to be very clear, too, and I should have mentioned while some of the people were in the room about that last rezoning, the $600 fee and things like that. Again, I always look at these zoning issues as teachable moments, because they always come up. The $600 fee doesn't go to the commission or its operation, and then one gets paid to be on that board, it's all a different thing. So where does the money go? It goes toward paying for the certified mail that's required by some law, goes to surveyors and abstracting, and all of the technical things that we have to fill. And in the overwhelming majority of rezoning applications, the city takes it back. And a lot of people don't understand that, or know that, or realize that. The taxpayer ends up subsidizing the actual costs of the rezon, the process that's required by law. And you don't want to cut the process because it's unfair to the surrounding property, or you suddenly have, who knows, next to them without that notification. So it's a fair and just law, but it's also somewhat costly to implement, and that's where the money goes, and right now, it does not come, so.
Yeah, I can only recall two actions that didn't cost the city more than $600.
Well, and before we get off into not on the agenda land, we'll just assume that there's no action on that, or if there's no action on that tonight, and I would imagine the same thing we're doing 12 here, which is discussion of possible action to... No, no, I thought we had two. I apologize. Okay, yeah, Johnson, thank you very much. There were two, it was the last one, this one, I apologize. Item number 12 is discussion of possible action to approve the proposed travel and training policy for the city of Talquaw. Ms. Carr, Ms. Curtis, is her... Ms. Chen, well, Mr., thank you for bringing her up, and congratulations, her, so, appreciate it. Before we begin, I want to say something, she's asleep now, so I can't embarrass her, but I have a perfectly good little seven-year-old back here who had to come with daddy for the first time to the city council meeting, and she has been a champ. And so if anybody sees me looking over my shoulder, I'm not fearful of an assassin or anything along those lines, because I was distracted tonight, I'm also playing the role of dad, and I've never done that for this chair before, so I apologize if I'm a little scatterbringer. Ms. Curtis?
You all have a copy of the proposed travel slash train policy. If you have any questions, I'd love to entertain that. If you need more time to review it, I understand that as well. I had a few questions. I apologize, I didn't want to try to email these to you on my lunch break, but between my three email accounts and two computers that I was working from, I could write things to cooperate like I needed them to, and I made copies. Hey, I have a copy for you. And then I have a question from Grant, which I did not get a chance to email him today either, is do we fall under the State Travel and Transportation Act law?
I have a few bags, y'all, that I have.
You can have this, actually, I'll give you. So that was going to be one of my questions to make sure, because I know from the last time this was presented, and I brought that older copy somewhere in my stuff as well, that we obviously streamlined it and cleaned it up significantly to my pack. Please do. And I realized, I made a note on here, I actually asked for page 16 and 17, I overlooked it, and I actually flipped through my pack. I didn't know if you wanted to look over these letters, to talk about them. Do you want to talk about them now? You want to talk about them, you want to meet again next week or whenever we meet again? It's your call. It's up to you guys. Because I just, I know some of the things that we're taking out, I know why, obviously you're trying to simplify it and improve, but I also don't want to take something out that we might be leaving for a legal reason, so.
Ms. Curtis, did anybody help you on this? Just your endeavor?
I reviewed a number of policies and took different parts for each one of those policies to come up with this.
But, and, and, excuse me if I'm, I'm too professional, but I like just being administrative policy, not just finance department. So can we get HR and, maybe even some council?
Sure.
I mean, I did, I'm much more pleased with the length of it, just...
I think that's kind of personal.
A few things that I'm concerned about that we might be, oh, having some personal gain issues in here with taxpayer dollars, which...
Personal gains?
Personal gain issues with taxpayer dollar, yeah. When we talk about entertainment, and I know it's, it's isn't here to be pre-operized and all that, but I think we're getting into a gray area that we probably rather not be in. And so, I tell, we want to have further discussions and bring a team... in, and so, so if we want to have further discussions and bring a team together on this, I'd be all about that, and I mean, we go for not just to cut the pays attention from other sources.
Sorry to interrupt, Counselor Bliss, but yeah, we did go, and I've grown up in this, this is what I've worked in my whole career, is following the state and federal regulations. So we did go from a 14-page policy to, I think, the new one's what, approximately three? So I know we took a lot of things out. Me personally, because this is the world I lived in, I'm accustomed to this, having to cover myself for state and federal funds, and so me personally, I'm more comfortable with this, whereas I know Counselor Bliss, he has a little bit different perspective. He's more comfortable, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Bliss, with the more simplistic you appreciate?
Well, I think somewhere between the three and 14.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's really...
This may be a little too stung down, but I don't want to be the person that you can ever...
We're asking to define luxury hotel and resort, now we're going to need to define Dolby Lock's porridge in terms of page number.
Well, that was just, that was just a question, that was just a question I had.
I'm not asking that Josh idiots define.
Well, you know, I understand that, but we're getting... You know what, like I said, we're getting into a gray area of personal gain, and whether it's related to city business or not, I mean, usually when you go to a training, you're there for a training. And a lot of times at conferences, if there's entertainment provided, that's included in the conference price or the package price.
Meals are not always.
Well, no, not meals, but I don't consider meal an entertainment.
It kind of depends.
Well, anyhow, and another thing I had an issue with, with 50 miles away, I mean, Tulsa's 66, so you got to go to Tulsa, I'm not saying you, but an employee has to go to Tulsa for a training for a day, and they can stay overnight on the city's dime when, you know, any other reason, any person that ride night is just going to drive back and forth for that night, and I'm not saying all employees would, but I think we should make an effort to use city property like vehicles to their maximum potential and not get in to the reimbursement of mileage, because I think we're going to take quite a unmoasted hit on that.
One of them just takes the entertainment phrase out. Meals and mudding, period.
I know, meals and mudding, I mean, you know, and then the business is going to stay overnight, and yeah, that's expected that we pick up that tab, because we're asking them to be away at our, at our leisure to conduct movies on our behalf. I get that, but, you know, 50 miles is not that far, and entertainment, if you want to go to movies, I mean, if you're here in Talalquaw, you're not going to have the city pay for you to go to Talalquaw.
We'll just take the entertainment now.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I have a question, though. Are we focusing on entertainment in, like, movie, entertainment is like movies or concerts? Because I think if you read Section 5, it's not talking about like a movie or concert, it's talking about if an issue were, if the city were to sponsor a table at the Heart of Gold Gala, like, that would be considered an entertainment idea here. The reimbursable expense would be the meal associated with that gala.
That was my point.
If we had to, if, if the city wasn't paying for that meal, the person, and I'm using the Heart of Gold Gala, now that I've said it, it's not a really good...
The employee's not going to...
But say, say like everybody had to purchase a meal at said event, that's, that's the only reimbursable, or reimbursable expense. It's not like you can now go to a concert and get reimbursed for the concert ticket. That's not what it's saying.
Well, I understand, but that's not the only, I mean, you said we both read it and had two different interpretations of it.
I know, but the, I mean, the sentence is, in this context, entertainment expense are limited to...
But you can't have a, but what?
A meal or a meal.
It's not specific enough, but it's too short or too long.
I mean, we can never find the balance here.
Ms. Carr, go ahead quickly, you have some more to advance.
So we're talking about something here, and if you read it, it says it needs to be approved by the administrator or the mayor. So myself, I'm not going to do it, and I know the mayor wouldn't do it, to say, yes, I have an employee and he wants to spend $2,300 on a table for seven people. That wouldn't happen. It's just not going to happen. And when you say the distance to Tulsa's not very far, so let's say we have a four-day conference, the meeting starts at 7:00 in the morning, and you're going to have the employee leave here at 5:30, 6:00, drive there, and so now he's going to be on company time or city time, and so now we're accounting for all his hours and his drive time. And when you talk about why they use a vehicle, not every city employee has a city vehicle.
I understand this.
And that's why it's worded that way, so you can account for employees who don't have a city vehicle.
Well, not every city employee is going to be going miles away for training either.
We do have employees who go miles away for training.
Anyway, so, yeah, I would like to talk about it further.
For the record, the language that's in here came from suggested policies from OML.
True. I mean, sometimes that's still not quiet enough to get us over the hump, no matter what expert we bring in, it's, we can't...
Counselor Long, go ahead.
And the previous version referenced that we would comply with Central Purchasing Act, State Travel Reimbursement Act, Office of Management and Interfaced Services, City of Taco Purchasing Policy, State of Oklahoma Travel Policy, and City of Taco, blah, 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 blah. So I think there's some things that are within that. If we're mandated previously, we referenced it and said we need to follow it, but now I think some of the things that are in there are not in this new document. And I'm not comfortable in that sense. I did not take the time to sit down and parallel that word for word.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable enough to give you an answer on that, sir, either, sorry. I've just been a long day.
Yeah, thank you.
Think so, but I'm not...
We could, we could always yow up the table and bring it back next meeting if you want.
Can't wait to go to Tahiti, I'm, I'm kidding.
We should all go together.
And it's going to be mileage, and I can't wait to let go, I can't wait to go to the movies, and it's going to be great. Do you want video of that?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll...
You can watch me watching darker stuff, I've been meaning to see that.
I think we eat coffee, too, right? Al, can you bring some coffee?
All right.
Oh, yeah. What's your name?
Hires.
There you go.
The city, we have company cars, but they're not GSA cars, correct? I mean, they're city-owned. So we're not in the GSA system, correct? So is that something we can be as a municipality?
I've never approached it, haven't, though.
I mean, because that might be, if we were to go into the GSA system, then that would streamline the process for us, I mean, because then you have the GSA...
The GSA.
Right, approved rate, you have the, you know, you have the federal mileage rate, you have, if a GSA car's not available, so you drive your own vehicle, you get this rate if a GSA car is available, but you still choose to drive your own vehicle, you have to do it at the GSA approved expense rate.
And it'll be 15 pages long.
Every place in Oklahoma, Oklahoma is $75 for meals, and it's reimbursable at these four areas. So, I mean, I think that that is something that we can look into. They wouldn't necessarily become a huge document, which is say, you go by the GSA code and get the GSA code.
Incorporate by reference.
And so I think if that, you know, like Counselor Long has said, if the GSA state rate, I'm sure they mirror each other to the most extent.
Yeah, they do, they do.
It's something we can become part of, then maybe that's something we should look into.
Are going to be examined as to whether or not they have to get up and travel, is irrelevant from a cost standpoint, except for how that you can adjust.
Tire, not tire.
Well, but, right. But anyway, I would happily make a motion at this point that we table it to allow Grant some additional time to review those documents and get back with us and give us a visual agreement, that would be my motion.
We have a motion to table from Counselor Long. Is there a second?
I'll second and ask that we have a inclusive meeting prior to the next council meeting with lead representation and administration, to include more than just the finance department to discuss.
We can certainly look into that, and clerk gives her a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Move.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I do like this form, too, by the way.
Item number 13, tenure. Now, you're back up again, Ms. Curtis, with discussion of possible action to update the city's P cards and customizable procedures through Arvest.
We have had presentation from JP Morgan Chase and Arvest. Both presentations offer similar things, but honestly, JP Morgan Chase has been a challenge over the last however long I've been here. We've experienced a number of issues with, primarily there only being one person who's willing to assist us in any kinds of changes that we need to make, such as credit limit, online access, or just an overall inability to be flexible with the city needs. So it is my recommendation that we change to Arvest because we have a point of contact that is local. They also offer flexibility, cash back on purchases. They will help us set out a solid plan that will keep us in compliance.
Is there a cost associated with this?
Nope.
Do we currently, I mean, do we have to bank with them?
No.
Or have an account with them?
No. This would be for the purchasing card on...
Does it require an execution of any type of a contract that has any type of length requirement?
No.
Maybe you stream it.
No, there would be limits placed on it. That's, that is the whole thing. From our standpoint, Arvest offers a whole lot more control, and, you know, that's, that's what it's about, being able to limit purchases, being types of purchases for different departments, being able to raise that limit, lower the limit as needed.
And we currently have, did you say JP Morgan Chase?
Correct.
Or the other local banks that offer this service besides Arvest?
Bank First has, has a service available, honestly. They never got back with me on doing a presentation for us, so I'm unsure what that, what that service is.
So we can mine 13, 14 years?
Not yet. We'll get, basically, whatever decision is made here, if there's one made, then that'll open us up for it.
I'm sorry, didn't the chamber recently look at this and have some presentations? Or I get sorry you're on the chamber board, too, though?
Yeah, the chamber has been looking at this, they're actually, it's on the agenda for tomorrow. And one of the, the, one of the neat features that they have, we've talked, they've talked about at the chamber, is that you get like 20 cards or however many cards, which you can turn them off, so there's only, can be one card of the 20 that actually are working at any time, and then you can actually go in and limit what those cards are. So I know that if I have a card and, you know, Ms. Curtis is going to a, to a conference, it can be for, it can only be used at a hotel, it can only be used at a restaurant, it can only be used at, so you can turn off, like, she couldn't then go to like a bookstore and use it to buy a book.
A software or an app?
Right, which is much like our GSA card, you know? If we have, if you're working in an organization that has GSA cards, it's the same type of thing, there's a trigger that how...
It has real-time accessibility.
I guess how businesses are set up. Mr. Soto could probably speak to how businesses are set up in the system, when they swipe a button, reads as, a restaurant reads as a bookstore. I know that I've gotten, my GSA card has been denied, like, when I go to the airport, the only thing to open in the airport is the...
Skybar.
The, the, no, the like, the little convenience, like, 6:00 in the morning, but it's coded as a convenient, it's coded as a bookstore, maybe, and so it won't, you can't buy anything in it, so. I mean, that's what our, so that's a neat feature that Arvest has, that I can't say if JP Morgan Chase, I don't say, but I think the way, what Ms. Curtis said, the fact that we have a local representative, we have a local establishment here that's willing to work with us, and is willing to kind of be on call when we need them, I think is a very good positive plus to maybe, you know, with this system.
What would we do with the 1% cash back? Because it could be substantial, even at 1%. I mean, just go back into the fund balance carryover?
That's what we are currently doing, with, the difference in, in what we receive is not that, going to be that much, as far as...
Do we currently receiving some cash back from Chase?
We are, but it's, it's a little less, but yes.
I wasn't even aware that we, okay. Learned something, you know? What were, is that coming in, like, Ms. Lingus, what revenue, I wonder, what revenue category is that? Because I know there's not like cash back rewards or whatever in the budget, so I just...
Never was a reward?
But it is less, okay.
So what are you act, so what are we actually doing? What's the, what's this item for? Just approval to...
I just need it to be approved to go forward with Arvest, basically.
So that's probably sign a contract? So do we need to approve allowing...
This would be one of those things, if we don't, we don't, we're not allaying cash, we could probably handle it internally if we'd wanted to.
We could have, but I thought it was better to be transparent, as did the mayor and...
So you're, okay, so we're just adding questions to the report. Well, I would make a motion to give that stamp of approval.
You're looking to a motion right now, here?
Certainly. I'm open to a motion, I mean, and I quit reading the items, but it never worked out that way. Do we have a second to Counselor Hires' motion? Second from Counselor Combs, just a quick piece of discussion. I used to have a counselor, beat me over the head a little bit about, they're not here now, but the rules, as they are written, clearly indicate we shouldn't say a word until somebody makes a motion any second, but we, we talk a lot, so. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And just because I want to talk a little bit more, I'll tell you a joke. There are a couple of, there are a couple of convenience stores, one here in Talalquaw, one in Muskogee, and I won't call out the owner's name, but I need to tell him, he's got to change. Being an elected official, you walk up and have the gas pump say, would you like a kickback reward? I'm like, no, no, I would not. I mean, quit offering me a kickback. I don't want any of that. I don't even agree with you. Item 14, discussion of possible action related to the city's P cards with JP Morgan Chase, and I suppose this is just going to be asking to tell JP Morgan, we don't want your cards anymore. Okay?
Just make sure that's contemporaneous with the other one being set up.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we, oh, no, they remind too much entertainment when the cards stop.
It's 10 days to get cards from Arvest.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll manage that one, I think. So we've got a motion from Counselor Combs, is there a second? Second. Second, Counselor Hires. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And 15, Counselor Bliss, should we...
Andrew Marler. Thank you, I was just curious, where are we at?
I, that...
Want to remove it?
That's what I was going to ask, do we need to go through?
There's no action.
Since it's on the agenda, I'll read it aloud, discussion and update on 2016, 2017 fiscal year audit, but we, you indicated that you're satisfied with the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got no action. Unless there's an objection. Seeing none, we can go to item 17, and there'll probably be a court objection from somebody, but we'll take a motion to even the jury. Is there a second? More than passive-aggressive court in another area, thank you, Counselor Combs. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss? Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.